So Courtney is.
Yes.
And Rich is not here.
Yeah, Rich is.
The United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, into his own liberty and justice.
Good morning, everyone. Uh, I guess the one thing we have is the agenda, and I don't think there's any correction to the agenda. Addition, so it's your most to the agenda. Second. The movement in second. And for the discussion, if not all of the favor signify the same eye.
Aye, aye.
My turn, right? Motion clear. Table turn it over to John.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. Good morning, everyone. Nice, nice drive up here. Went right into the sun for a little while, so my eyes are getting back adjusted. Yeah, I think I sent the agenda out yesterday, and I kind of coordinated that with Courtney. I think what what my focus is today really is to have this meeting with you all from nine till ten, ten thirty, whenever we wrap up. Works and then the intention is really today to have some meetings with folks that I had put on the schedule, which is a couple ages into the doc about maybe four pages in. I have department schedule set up, and again, I talked to Courtney about this earlier, probably last week. To discuss space needs with the assessor Cindy, is that Cindy? That's what we tried to dissolve in the meeting today as well. I don't think I. I might bet you last.
I think so, Ashton, I'm in the other quarter.
Want to make sure I have everybody sit up, leave minutes. And. So if you all have the schedule, I don't know if you have it or not, I have copies as well. If you want to grab one of those. Really, the focus this week is to have meetings to talk about space needs for each department. So today I have Cindy, then I have Courtney as the auditor this afternoon. If it works, we could switch that out to somebody else. And I guess Zach here, if there's anybody else, maybe we can switch out for Courtney's meeting this afternoon. And I also have Jason with the communications center. Sherry, clerk of court, and Sarah with G I S, and these are just an alphabetical order. But if it works to switch those out, I have an hour plugged in for each group. And I have basically a format that I'll follow to go through each department and talk about space needs, you know, offices, how many people in departments, size of the department, storage, things of that nature. So with that said, I will be here today, and then I'll also be here on Friday. Wrap this up, and I think there was a discussion when we met a couple of weeks ago to talk to the people in the Ricky building as well, and maybe kind of go through the same process to see what the space needs would be for the Ricky building. And conceptually, the idea there is to potentially show an addition often in future to this building, to take those folks over potentially into an addition to this building over on the east side. So I don't have that on my schedule, but what I could probably do if it works is try to fit the people in the Ricky building either into this week, or I could also do a Zoom call with them maybe next week if that works for everybody. So. I sent it out on an email. I don't know that they have to have, and I think so long that I can go through it.
Okay.
And it could be sent out as well, I think. Courtney has that doc that I just sent over yesterday, so really, it's a guide. I don't know that we're going to check each box on the entire form, but it's kind of a guide that I'll use to go through today, and I guess it wouldn't hurt to have everybody have that and sort of take a look at it and get an idea, you know. Maybe fill it out before we meet. In fact, I'll kind of guide the process a little bit easier. And another thing I could do too, I could meet, if there's an office, I could sit in for the day, I could do that, set up my computer and have the meetings in an office, or I can go to each individual. I want to be flexible and understand people are working and whatnot, I want be mindful of that, so. Just use this room and have people come in, that that's perfect, that that works really well, because then I can kind of get set up and and do things that way, so. That's it in a nutshell, I do have, it's kind of a, it's an agenda, it's also what we had talked about in the last meeting, which we can go through, and really, you know, the the gist of this is I have four meetings with the board, you know, supervisors. So as much information as I can gather in this hour, hour and a half for the wants and necessities of the of the county where the courthouse. I hope to hit that and take some of these points and kind of talk through them. And as we get decisions made and whatnot, I'll probably move it off of the real agenda and just have that information to use when we do the assessment and also get some schematic floor plans for the for the courthouse. We can go through this list.
So I just have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
So when you said four meetings with the supervisor.
Well, on my schedule, I have, I have the schedule right back here. Second to the last, last page. Our first meeting was the week of this is August thirtieth. We met on a Wednesday, I can't remember the exact date on that, and it was the first.
Oh, you did last meeting.
Yeah, I think it's on the last. Is it not in yours? Okay, so back to the question. The schedule has four meetings, every, one meeting every three weeks, basically. Which was a rough outline of when we intend to meet, so this is our second meeting, the twenty second. And again, we're gonna have another meeting, it looks like October. Let's say thirteen, we're trying to hit Wednesday with these. And then our final will be November, let's say, third. That's when we turn in the report and the drawing, so so right now where we are in the schedule is kind of this milestone one, where we're having the work sessions, the space needs, filling out spreadsheets for that. We're also drawing up the floor plans, right now we got the original PDF copies of the original drawings, so S E H is drawing up the floor plan, but not a cast of the original building layout, so we have that. And so really what we're doing right now is we got our initial kickoff meeting a couple of weeks back. Right now, it's kind of a information gathering session. Understanding the space needs, we're putting together the drawings. And with this, these space needs reviews, what I'll do is put together a program for the courthouse, and that'll show the space requirements for each department. And ultimately, I'll give us kind of a grand total of square footage is that are required for all the departments. And now that we have the original drawings, we can go back and determine what square footages are available. And with that said, I'll be able to do a new layout, some conceptual layouts for the future for each department. And a couple of weeks ago, we talked about maybe where we'd want each department on each floor, conceptually. So with that said, there's, there's only so much square footage on each floor, so you're gonna have to go through the program, see how many square feet are required for each floor, what's available. So we'll have some more conversations down. Let's talk about where departments will fit, really, you know, let's simply speak one each floor. And I know we've got to have it outlined where we, the departments could eventually, you know, sort of so. Right now, really where we're at is sort of that information gathering and getting our our plan, our drawings, sort of, you know, like the Blue Stone came and visited the building last couple of weeks ago. They're writing up their assessments right now, so they're doing the written portion of it. So I got your question, I was gonna go right on the on the schedule.
Well, half, half of it.
Okay, sure, what was the other?
So, so the other half is this, I guess, so you're gonna go around and you're going to interview Lisa and interview Ashton. And I, we haven't discussed this, but I, I guess I feel that there could be conceptual ideas that each supervisor has. Do you plan to interview supervisors all individually? I think that would be a good idea, because, because, I mean, right now we got a camera on us. And we have all these people, and and so we have other people in the courthouse that are probably actually watching us too, so anytime we say something.
Yeah.
So I, I guess, does anybody else feel?
I agree.
What I'm saying.
Yeah, I would say whoever is interested in sitting in on the on the meetings is welcome, so if it's the department head and the supervisor.
No, I guess that's not what I'm talking about. What I'm talking about is me and you. And you and Jean, and you and Scott.
Oh, I see.
Stephanie.
Yeah.
So because we probably have different ideas.
Sure, yeah.
And it seemed like, you know, the last meeting that we had, you know, there were other people in the courthouse watching, and you know very well how that went.
It's like a while already going down the hall.
Yeah.
Oh, is it? Okay.
So I guess that's kind of what I'm saying is that I think we can be more open.
Sure.
We can be more expressive on how we think things are going, if we could talk to you about.
Yeah, oh, sure, yeah.
Does that make sense?
Well, and I think the, I think also to your Zach, I think we probably all got different ideas too.
Well, that's what I mean, we all got different ideas, that's the point.
Well, and I think, yeah.
And then you can say, well.
Were these ideas fit the best?
Yes, and you know, okay, so Jean's idea fits real close to what he's thinking about, you know. Or where Stephanie and and Rich are thinking, you know, what they're thinking about. So I just think that you would be a lot further ahead at some point in time, knowing what we are thinking.
Sure, sure. Well, and I think really what my goal was is that this hour and a half, we could, we could go through that. How if we want to do that in another time or another meeting, we can do that.
I think you're right, you probably get a general idea here, what we're gonna do, but I think it would be wise, but not necessarily if you have to meet with us or just it'd be a phone call.
Oh, sure. And we could.
It can be a phone call.
Yeah, yeah, so I have three weeks in between each of these sessions, and we can do phone calls to discuss the project as well individually, however we want to do it. We want to be accommodating, I think right now what we're trying to do with each department is going to just a real concrete understanding of how things are are being performed right now, space, you know, allowances right now. But in the future, what could those spaces need to look like if we talk about, let's say, treasurer's office. I'll go through and find out, and really, this is an idea, this is just to get an idea of what a future floor could look like, so. I know we have vaults in each of the departments, if those were to go away, and we could open up this space a little bit more. And that's really what, if you're on this program statement, is what could those spaces look like? Could it be one office, two offices, what is storage look like? You know, an open office concept, what is that look like? So really, that's the point of it on each space, and that helps me get to the program, which is how much space is going to be used in the future, how much space do we have, and how does each department lay out the building best? And really, if we back all the way up to the original request for the program, the statement of R F P, when we started the project, it's, we want some schematic plans for the courthouse. Do want an analysis of the H B C, and we want some schematic drawings and a building assessment, so that's, that's really what we're providing right now. How we get there? Uh, you know, we'll, we'll get there, and I think today really, again, is to go through and just have these conversations, and if that works for everyone, again, we're I, you know, I'm open to any sort of ideas, I'm this run a little bit better, this is sort of the format that I'm used to doing. And getting a program statement ready. Getting input from anybody that's involved, you know, on the stakeholder side, so.
Yeah, and I think I agree with what you're saying, you're trying to get an idea what their needs are, what the future is.
Yeah.
But, you know, some of those I just want to make a statement, sometimes those wishes may not.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, there's not so much space.
Understood, yeah, so we're gonna get all that information and we can, we can talk, and I understand what you're saying, you want to talk about that.
Yeah, I'd really like to try that.
Exactly, yeah, yeah. And so really, I think what we need first is to, is to gather the information, and then after this, we'll process it, you know, and you know, I, it'll, it'll be interesting to see what sort of comes out of the each, each meeting, but again, this is sort of the problem, we have, we have to get a program statement put together, what does that look like eventually, will it get sorted out? As a group. But again, today, we just have to, today and Friday, talk to everyone, see what the wants are, what the needs are, and kind of go. We did have these conversations a couple of weeks ago too about what the goals are of the projects, so we're, we're gonna get all this information taken in and then processed. So. Does that help out, or there's, there's probably a lot of conversations due since this is televised as they go on besides just this meeting, so. You know. Hopefully, I'm answering the questions that you all have, and with the understanding that this goes out sort of, that's some scrutiny, you know, in public, so. It's all understandable, it's, it's a, it's a process, sometimes it's, it's not so easy, but it's just something that has to happen to get ourselves to the next step, so. With that said, I do have some kind of notes from the last meeting that we can go through, the path to communication right now that was decided on was Courtney and I copying Jean, and I did that yesterday with the with the agenda and whatnot, hopefully that's working out. We did talk about some testing of the existing building that might be things set up. A C M lead paint, just so we know in the future in our assessment, what we're dealing with in the existing building, going into the future. Items were potential departments moving, and I think we talked about the the Ricky building and who's there, and I would like to get an idea who you'd like me to talk to there, if I'm doing the the analysis on the, you know, potentially moving people out of the Ricky building into another facility.
The yellow texture D H S.
And I could set that meeting at the first one.
Well, D H S though.
Control of their.
Yeah. We're talking downstairs.
Don't know if it's.
All starts.
No.
There's time, right?
We can get that.
I don't, I don't know if there's much really to do with that, though. No. No, I she's gonna tell you that, you know, the, the county has to provide space for me, and this is the space they're getting. Yeah. The other thing is, is that, you know, how much space does she actually need?
Yeah.
I guess that's probably the only conversation, because in the past, they've always had people staffed, but with COVID now, they're all working alone.
Right.
Yeah, and I guess that's probably the, you need to get that field before that's.
Yeah, if, I mean, if they're all coming back, then.
And the other ones. And the only other one that you need to talk to over there would be
Home Care.
Maybe, you know, maybe it all. Cause you got V A on your list already.
Uh, maybe.
Yeah, maybe in the home.
Okay, so we have D H S and Home Care. Yeah.
And then there's also V A over there, but you've got someone listed.
Yeah, V A, I do have.
You've got that.
Okay. Uh, Tanya?
Yeah.
All right. Yeah, so this will give me an idea, I think what I might do is this might be your phone call or kind of a web, you know, Zoom meeting or whatnot. Just because I have the meetings this week, today, and Friday, so I'm looking at persons. These other folks at the Ricky building would be sort of future planning down the road, if you would, if you decide to consolidate everybody here at the courthouse. Or an issue to the courthouse.
And like I said, I think I would add John on this world.
Got you, got me, turn.
Can I just ask the first?
Yeah. Yeah, these meetings are sort of interesting when you call up and you can sort of say, I'd like to talk to you about your future space needs, sometimes it's they, they sort of know that that call is coming, or they don't know, and they kind of say, well, I don't, you know, I don't really know what you even want, so.
That's kind of why I'm asking if you handed off this packet prior to some of these people, they could see some of the questions that are coming.
Yeah.
Kind of brainstorm prior to meetings, so instead of taking an hour, take.
Yeah, right, right, so I think what I'll do is I'll get this in their hands before I, you know, I'll probably get them on an email list or whatnot, just make sure. That coordinated, so. That was item C. Some of these we can kind of skip over, some of it.
When you have, you have that probation office on.
Probation office was brought up, now if you'd like anything.
My understanding is that seems to allow them to utilize over their new work portion, one of these conferences for that. I understand also the probation office is actually doing a lot of the work out of new opportunities, because we didn't particularly alcohol and drugs area. As you do your assessment, so they can kind of walk right over to the next office and see what's actually going on.
Yeah, sometimes doesn't work so great.
I wasn't even aware of that.
Yeah, yeah.
The only problem they have out there is probation office that they can't have anybody up to. You know, that's on the sex. That's why they try to come back.
So the question is, would it ever be considered that probation would move over to that? I don't, I don't think that's probably.
That's probably not in this. If it is, it's gonna be over there.
Okay, so I guess that boils down to, do I need to speak with them, or do I just? Nah, I don't, it's okay. I think they're kind of where, they're gonna go where they're directing. Okay. So public help and you. We can talk about the flooring, so as we refer to each floor, we're gonna go basement, ground floor, first floor, second floor. Our floor plans, and I think that just gets us all sort of on the same page. If I started out basement, first floor, second floor, we'll go back to that. Original convention. Uh, we did discuss primary goals of the assessment project. And I think what I heard is the H B A obviously is a thing. Kind of a, one of the main components of the assessment, and then obviously, probability of potentially layout in the future is another, another part of the assessment, and at the end of that, you know, obviously, like our written assessment of the building, physical condition, and then you'd like to have floor plans as well, in terms of how the building could potentially lay out in the future, and there's a list of things here that we discussed. I don't know if you have to go into each and every one of them, but as a group, as we're meeting, that kind of goes back to where I said, we're, we're having floor these kind of in person meetings. Any of these items that you would like to discuss more as we go down the list, we can certainly do that, and ensure we're all on the same page. You know, moving forward with this project. Treasurer's office was mentioned, and I believe that was due to existing space in the office, and that potentially had to be a little marker. And that's something that we will talk about when we do these these meetings. Let's see, Lisa, I have you on the twenty fourth, but I guess I would ask if you wouldn't mind switching with Courtney's spot today?
Today?
Yeah.
She was down, she's down for.
Yeah. Twelve one, yeah.
I can check, I only have three in my office right now, I'm just during lunch hour, but I can help you check, so you can switch down.
That is the lunch hour, yeah, yeah, it's tough to get all these pens squeezed in your eight hour day, like our seven hour. If that works for you, I could we can do twelve one.
We have drives off driver's license, testing to the two, some home persons in the app.
Okay. So it's down, yeah. Another item we did discuss, what we assess as a supervisor's order. And since we're all here today together, we could go through this statement, kind of discuss the needs for that particular boardroom, I don't have it on my schedule, but I think this meeting could be if you get opportunity to go through and discuss that. And it was mentioned that that could be on the ground floor, could be on first floor, we'll take that into consideration once we're in plans. Another concern was how to get people to flow in and out of the building, there's some congestion, the way things are laid out. So we will certainly think, obviously, we'll keep the corridors public lobbies as they are, but, you know, I think that's something to consider. The congestion within the offices, obviously, we'll address as we do new schematic layouts for each department. Uh, the A D A restrooms, we've been discussing, you know, the idea that we want those on the main how we're saying this ground, first floor. First floor. A D A restroom. And we talked about. I guess I brought up. The idea. Maybe it's me, but having staff experience, maybe that was brought up by.
Yeah, I think I said that. Male team members have a. Word call.
And units extra.
Units extra, that's.
And I kind of interjected in there too that maybe we would want to consider a staff break room. And that you and that unit sex restroom near the staff break room. Uh, that is a question for the group really, is that that's something, a break room is something that you'd want to consider for the whole building for for staff?
Start utilizing space that makes sense for.
Yeah, I think you have to draw that from them.
Well, I think see how it all fits in the plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, at the same time, I think, you know, this year, you know, this major employment use for other functions.
Okay.
Sure, if there's been any special event where we have lunches. And other public uses of it. It'd be nice if we had the public meeting room in there yet, I think, but. But see how it shakes up.
Yeah, you're right. Um, that does kind of lead into maybe. A multi-purpose room. Uh, other than the supervisor room, maybe a multi-purpose room for the uh building that could be used uh. For. Our units and, you know, conferences, larger small. Uh, other than utilizing um. What I would perceive as the supervisors. Uh, meeting room stuff. You're right, it it depends on how much room there really is.
Well, I guess what I'm looking at, yeah, supervisor room can be multi-functional.
Okay.
But at the same time, I don't necessarily think you want to have a lot of. Food.
I was gonna say, I don't know if I'd mix a living room with a cafeteria setting.
Yeah, I mean, that, I think there's still a need.
Okay.
If we can make it work, yeah.
And we'll we'll know more after we get off through the program and what space we have available.
Right now, currently, I think everybody's kind of got their own coffee machines and places, whatever.
Under walls.
Yeah, what I what I have seen work in the past is a staff break room with a refrigerator. Microwave, all that sort of thing. Uh, and then, so that's shared amongst everybody in the building. And maybe out of the main flow of traffic, you know, it could be on the, right, I would say, ground floor, maybe a bit. Uh, spot for that.
Yeah, could that be a public meeting?
Probably, well, it's one of those things where if you want a public meeting, it could be shared with staff, so. You know, staff could be there anytime, sort of getting by here. So I think really what's, I think you hit the nail on the head. See what's available in terms of space.
I think that's.
Yeah, yeah, that would really drive it. Um, so that would help us size if we were to do it. I think it works to have. A staff break room and then each department gets a coffee, coffee beverage, you know, bar, low refrigerator, little sink. Maybe a microwave, maybe not, depending on how, you know. How you want that to go, but um. I'll see how how, you know, how things look, but I think having that staff restroom, break room separate from all the public functions. This is a good option and we'll see how things work there, so. Have that noted now for, you know, for future.
How it all shakes up, what reminds.
Well, this is just planning too, which is it's ink on paper right now, so. And again, it's sort of a guideline. Sort of a roadmap for future projects. This isn't etched in stone just yet. It's it's conceptual plan for the. Courthouse uh over the next, say, thirty, forty years, basically, you know, sort of workout. For that stuff. Uh, these are just ideas right now and again, part of the overall buildings. Uh, some of the things we talked about is how to use the spaces a little bit more effectively in the courthouse. Um, talked about counters. Uh, maybe uh in the future, upgrading counters uh to utilize maybe more effectively. Talked about security for the counters. Uh, there's the sliding doors. Maybe there's another uh option. Uh, for the counters for security. Um. Obviously, down the road, you probably want to refinish the counters. New materials and my, uh, as as potential remodels for, so. Uh, there's, there's sort of right now, just looking through, there's, there's some counters that are pretty original to the way they were set up and there's some that are already definitely re, you know, revised or renewed, so. I don't know that we'd get into the design too far on the counters in the assessment, but I I do think as we go through the program for each space, we could identify. How many positions would be required at each counter, you know, stand up, sit down, just identify all those sorts of things in terms of the assessment for the future. Another, we wanted to go through each and every single one of these. Uh, it was discussed at the last meeting. Uh, Zach and the county engineer, so uh. If the, once the jail's empty, uh. Utilizing that space for maintenance use in the garage. Uh, for maintenance and the county engineer as well.
I'm not.
No. Okay.
To figure out, you know, they got their own building.
Got it, okay, I must have missed that, so, so mainly Zach.
I said, then Zach.
Zach doesn't need support for.
No, 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 stop just the jail. Then Roger, you got bored of this, Roger.
So as we're doing layouts for, you know, future, uh, you know, space planning. I think we would identify maintenance going in the jail, jail and. Just so we're all on the same page, done that again.
Well, I think that makes sense, maybe even next.
I'm sorry, haven't, oh, the maintenance near, yeah, yeah, that does make a lot of sense, so. Uh. We did discuss too the the overall site plan and uh. I think what what I would do in the assessment portion of it in the drawing is obviously identify, you know, jail, the courthouse. Potentially a future addition for down the road, uh, identify where that could be located. Size of that, I think, would be important in terms of how large is it, how big stories would it be? If it would potentially go over on the east side, I think we'd have to think about um. You know, how that sort of fits in with where the garage is right now, or. You know, we could talk about that too, like, that is a good point you brought up. Each individual conversations we could have in terms of. How to, you know. We we could show it conceptually and a plan for that addition to go and uh. Kind of again leave that as sort of a roadmap for the future, if if something were to happen there. Sort of the size and shape of what that could potentially be. Overall landscaping uh and all that, it was discussed. Um, I I would want to ask the group how far you would want us to get into it. I I don't think we really had landscaping plans and whatnot in our original sort of scope outline. Uh, we would certainly do a site plan and sort of show where things could eventually go. Conceptually, so if we talked about the course, that one, things of that nature. I think we could do some conceptual layouts of the of site. I know that there's um. A lot of pieces and parts on this particular courthouse. Site, so if we wanted to do sort of. A master plan about, uh, you know, in addition to potentially the, uh, there's large intent over there. I'm not proposing anything happens to that or, you know. Anything, but uh, all those things would need to be discussed, I think, uh, to do an overall conceptual. Site plan that would be given in addition to the.
You know, on that. I think it would be good. When you look at the courthouse and you look at the jail. It would be nice if you. Have the sofa to be the same on the overhang. Notice that it's considerably smaller than the one that's on the. The entrance to the jail. Put the same type of. Safer on there, you know, that way they would match and even just that little bit. We make it just look better.
You're talking about the one that you're trying to put under?
Yeah. Comes out.
Yeah. Well, I think, I think.
I mean, it's not, you know, just, even just little stuff like that.
Yeah, I think there's only so much we can do probably on the drawings, but I think in a written assessment, we could probably identify some of these items. For future projects.
I mean, that's something.
Yeah, right. You're you're talking about the drive up.
Soft on this and steel or concrete metal, there's.
On the top, yeah, yeah, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about the overhang, yeah.
The drive up, you know, yeah, yeah, up there. Uh, communications, uh. That's the nine one one uh area. Talked about that potentially needing to enlarge and again, some of the space needs will come out in the uh. In the program. Space needs discussions, we can, we can ballpark the size of that, but. Uh, we did talk about, uh, excuse me, possibility for. The boardroom, supervisor's boardroom also potentially being. The operations center.
Yeah, because I don't think we need to deal with E O C. It may not get used for fifty years. I mean, we can utilize the same boardroom.
So question really is, um. Would there be?
Well, that 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 is a point, but, you know, when we talk to emergency management, they say, what if the top of this building is gone? Yeah, I'm talking about. It'd be better to be there to be downstairs.
I agree.
You know, I mean, that's, and. I don't know, I, I mean.
Well, the question is, uh, you know.
That one that you're gonna use forever, you know.
Well, I mean, that's a, yeah, you hope, you never use it.
Yeah.
You know, but, you know, I, you know, I I guess it's kind of like natural down.
Where you need to go in case of emergency, all the decision makers need here.
Yeah, you know, I mean, um, things do happen, you know. I think this is a pretty safe structure to begin with.
It is, yeah.
You know, I. I think it'd take quite a bit to take all this concrete down, but.
So with that said, I think really the question there in terms of laying out the space, we'd have the nine one one. Uh, needs, they talked about two councils that they have right now, maybe potentially expanding that. Uh, in future, maybe the three or four, or whatever that is. I think you could. You can draw up the needs for four, but not get there immediately, maybe get to three eventually, and then maybe, yeah, the fourth council, but you have the room sort of planned out for in the future. Question there to. Does that whole space change that if it were to become an emergency operations center? Or would it even, maybe the nine one one communication would remain its own? And the county boardroom would also be doubled as the emergency operations center, so. Something, something to think about is when we're doing the layouts, uh, do we want the boardroom to double as the. Potential E O C and what does that mean in terms of space? We could talk about that. Who who would come here? How many, you know? How many bodies you'd have in the room at any given time? What do you need in terms of audio visual? Uh, I think we will have time, once we wrap up here, to talk about. That particular piece, if we want to do that now, or if we want to do that another time as well, that's, that's okay.
You can do it.
Yeah, okay, I guess you might just.
You gotta remember that this is a wish list.
Absolutely, no, 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 yeah, this is all, like I said, this is all planning, so it's part of the assessment. For the future, uh, and each of these projects could be done individually over time, that's a. Project doesn't need to happen, it's just putting putting out there for the next. What's gonna happen with the courthouse over the next number of years, yeah.
One thing to do about this whole project. And that's the thing.
Yeah, 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 but.
I think you set those up too. You you set them up for a category one tornado. So it's hundred and twenty mile hour.
In my opinion, we'll just get this phone rolling.
Yeah.
You'd have it in the same space the boardroom is, because we can't really. If we do it down near nine one one, they're gonna be busy taking all the calls from, if if that ever happens.
I think it's a distance.
Yeah.
We had, we had that discussion already with emergency management on where you. I mean, right now, there's. Guarantee that there's conversations going on because we're speaking over here. And um. Yeah, so I mean. Worst case scenario, I mean, if um. Now, if there's a tornado that gets, but it doesn't get here. Supervisor's room, wherever it is, would be, would be the spot you would go to. However, if, you know, if it came through here. You know, the windows are making blown out of the supervisor's room, wherever it is. You know, I mean. It could be a a mess, but not that it's, not necessarily that it's down.
Yeah.
But it's. You can't really hold a meeting there because, you know.
So the, so the way that room would be.
I guess, I think you're right in saying that the supervisor room should probably be. Be number one spot, but the number two spot is probably not being. Is that kind of the direction that you're looking for or something like?
Yeah, I think so. I think uh. I think the question is. Redundancy, so you have. The main emergency operations center, let's say, be here or elsewhere. We could talk about that, uh, and having a backup as well, another location. If this building really, you know. By chance, you know, this building was compromised or whatnot, whatever, or you know, what, uh, if there were to be a backup location, so. I think when we talked about the emergency operations center, you talked about windows being blown out and things of that nature. Think you have a plan for that, so would we put shutters over the windows? In the event of an emergency, those, we can get rolled down, get your backup generator, um. You know, you'd have the room hardened, obviously, and I think this, I don't want to go too far down the road with this, but. If we're talking about this particular building, this structure is concrete, so it's really spout. We could talk to the structural engineer and see what his opinion is on what we need to do to the actual, um, you know, room, if we're on this floor, four and one or whatever it is. Uh, to, you know, to stand up to a certain wind speed, things of that nature. The other question is, we talked about the boardroom either going on the, um. We did talk about going basement, I don't think. We talked about it on the first or ground floor. So, I mean, this this space seems. Like a great location for it. They could grow because sheriffs. Going out and opening here pretty soon, so if we identified the space as being this space, we, you know, next steps would be in the written assessment. What would need to happen to this space to. Increase sort of its its durability, whatnot. I think the shutters over the windows, I've done an operations center in Grand Island. That's just what we did there, put the shutters on. Uh, put it on backup generator and really you do the best you can to survive, you know. You have a real survival, a hundred point, you know, you have one or. Maybe after that, maybe another county or something would have to kind of chip in and sort of help out, you know, Carol can, but. Uh. You sort of. You you can't budget for anything over, you know, and you have more on your direct hit or whatnot. I think you have to go into it with the mindset that. This wouldn't be the location where the tornado actually hit, it was a big tornado, that. That might happen somewhere else, but you would bring in all the other uh. Parties into this particular room. tornado is just one thing to do, could be any, any sort of, you know, emergency, but um. You have a room here, everybody come here, that's sort of what you budget for, and, yeah, the worst scenario could happen, directed building or something, but. I don't think you can really plan, like, the best worst scenarios, so, um. With that said, and I I agree, kind of getting this process, you know, going, would it? Would you prefer to be on this floor for this, for the boardroom and for the uh. Potential E O C?
I think.
I think that's the conversation that we have to meet and they have to have individually supervisors.
Oh, I said, yeah, it's just space that I'll, yeah, you know.
And I think, you know. I thought is that where we have that boardroom, that it see. Have the latest technology and so can support that for the E O C and. I do not think this, uh. Social, that kind of media is going to go away, I think we're gonna see more of that. Because we're gonna be, I think, a lot of people like you that only need this instead of saving the expense for traveling and stuff.
Yeah.
I think that's gonna be good, so that's why I won't see that. One, based on, I want to, so we're facing the public. It's got the latest technology. It's capable of probably going maybe up to twenty, twenty five people. If we have any group there or not, then we need to go to a meeting room or brought to a courtroom to check this out. Because I don't think historically, we do not have a big attendance in our boardrooms. Unless we have a real controversial issue and then. We need to be prepared, and we also have the option to utilize conversations. Which we have.
I mean, you know, just with this. Public attendance has increased.
Yeah.
And I think you were, that's your move on, so we're facing one way, it's our way to say, this was some ways back in terms of.
Well, I mean, they can, you know, the direction, obviously.
Yeah.
It's on me right now, you know, so, so I mean, that that technology is pretty good, I mean, it does, camera does move and. So you're right, we.
So you used to have another board set at the head table.
Yeah, we're sitting all around us.
Uh, yeah, 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 so.
You know, we're sitting around it, well, whoever's on this side of us and stuff, they're looking at our back.
Yeah, so this isn't really your, your typical arrangement.
The only reason we're down here is because of construction.
Yeah.
We moved down there with COVID because then we did more social business. That's why we're down.
Got it, okay. Um, how many people would be on board?
Five board members, I, so if you wanted to figure configurations for the table or. I would say you want to have five board members placed for your auditor. Possibly that maybe to connect an additional one case.
So what I have seen too, and I'm sure you have as well, and so you have the board members at the head table in front of them. And you have a side table next to it. Perpendicular, so. But, uh, let's say a couple, auditor, county attorney, and that's the way we could lay out the, however you want to draw that out, yeah. Audio visual, I think we could, uh, you know, um. We could do that in a written sort of verbal, uh, you know. Uh, assessment, I, I think you, usually what I see is that you have it here is a, is a display behind. Uh, the board, and then you'd also have one of the side more, the public health scene, you know. But that said, those could be projectors like you have here, that could be monitors, and I think we would just write that in sets. That's, that's sort of the way, uh, would you proceed needing a lectern? For people to come up and speak to the board?
I think that'd be a good idea.
So you said, uh, groups probably handle about twenty to twenty five visitors.
Well, that'd be probably mostly they have the time, but most time we only have maybe one or two people, well, like the day, that's just theater type scene. Yeah, we had like two, three or four.
Movable chairs? Yeah, I think if you, you know, I mean, it would be nice if, if, uh, you know. They would be movable simply because if you wanted to use it for something else, like voting, and that type of thing, you can move those out, you can have space.
Well, that, if it is also the E O C, so you can arrange.
Or you can put tables up.
Yeah, I think it'd be nice, that, that's seen to portable.
Yeah, I think you're absolutely.
And if you want to use it for other functions too.
Yeah, you're right, voting could go in potentially on those voting areas, if you utilize that. E O C, I think. So movable rather than. Yeah, yeah, so with the lectern and whatnot, um, you'd plan for floor boxes to be able to plug in your communications and all this. Uh, that gets pretty far down the road into the detail on that, um, that particular room. Uh, let me think, what else, what else we could potentially use that for, would a whiteboard come in handy? And this is just all stuff I'll be writing for each program space, um. Kind of wants needs, that could all be shaken out later, but this is kind of where we're going with it, is planning the spaces, showing them conceptually, and.
You know, I mean, to have an E S N on whiteboards, is a simple thing to throw in there, and we've never, I don't know that we ever. Uh, we've never used a whiteboard, the only, the only presentations that I can remember that the board has had, or. A lot of the stuff is. Projected and otherwise, Neil, when we were doing the, the, uh. Yeah, the, the budget breakdown on the, on the, uh, the, uh. Reserves. You know, that was, that's the only time I remember them.
Just for conversation's sake too, um. What I've seen in the past too is you could make the, this meeting room that we're talking about open up to a larger, so you have a movable wall potentially. So that help, you can double inside. With those movable walls. Comes an opportunity to have that be the whiteboard, if you need to, and I'm just kind of throwing things out there, just so, you know. For future planning, but if you wanted to. And this area here is sort of outshaped going into the sheriff's space, if you wanted to potentially. Be able to open that room up, maybe you could do a conference room on this floor as well, this separate. Conceptually to make that into a larger E O C area. Or, you know, larger for a larger, sometimes you'll have a larger public meeting, but you need to open up a little bit additional space for it, so. Throwing that out there, I don't want to limit kind of the thought process on how this room is, and if it's just fixed, and there's no opportunity to expand it. But maybe that's something to consider, is it?
Yeah, something to consider, but I don't think we're gonna have enough space.
Yeah.
Those two lenses are gonna be pretty small.
Yeah. Okay. If it were to be an E O C, uh. I know that there's certain requirements into, you know, more than, let's say, the, the boardroom just has the one screen or two screens. Thinking E O C, you probably want more than that, uh, provided, so. I guess I'm wondering if there's any way, you had mentioned that you maybe had somebody talk to you about an E O C or what that would require. Is anybody I could speak to that could give me more information on what would be necessary from an E O C standpoint? In terms of, but there needs to be backup generator, I think backup power.
It's not the building where it's supplied by a backup camera.
So probably. All right.
Yeah.
But that's gonna go away.
No, it's, it's, I didn't know.
It's gonna be tight, it's gonna be tied into the other one, yeah, the current one's gonna go away.
So you want backup power though, from.
Yeah, we will have backup.
So, E O C, I think backup power is a requirement, and then question, one little sort of kitchenette in this room as well, so. Future planning, uh, when I say kitchenette, I think I just mean small fridge, steak. Coffee bars, what if, in the public meeting room.
I, I, the only thing that I would consider is to have. A, um, a counter space with some, kind of like they have a, uh, the head center where you don't have a sink. Have receptions, you can have that type of thing, I mean, I don't think we have to have anything.
There'll already be a break room here, so if we're here, we can come use the fridge somewhere else.
So maybe being adjacent to a break room.
Yeah.
But I think what you're getting at, the E O C rooms, they want, is someone to stay in there probably twenty four seven.
Yeah.
They got.
Yeah, and so, so that's why I think, you know, where the communication center is. Where the communication center is right now, I mean, there's a bathroom off there, it's a shower, I think.
Yeah.
So I mean, if, if somebody's gonna stay twenty four hours, you can set cots up down there, you can, you know, I think they've got, did they have a break room?
It's a kitchenette, but it's kind of Jason's office. So Jason sits there and manages the kitchen.
So, yeah. Yeah, if, if you want to get your fill of information, that would be the person to contact.
Who was that? I just, I, I'm sorry.
Jason, Jason Huffman.
Jason.
That wish list will get long.
The wish list will get long, but we'll see what we can do, you know.
Oh, he's gonna have good ideas.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not saying that, but it's just like.
What, what happens, we have to, we have to live in a world. What happens, yeah, is this, the wish list gets this big, but we have to bring it back down to this big, to reality, so I, I understand that.
I, I don't know, you see on here.
I think it's, I mean, even if, even if you did have some of this on two floors, structures. I think so.
Yeah, if it were a wood frame building, I'd be a little nervous, but this building. I think it makes sense, um.
I mean, there's, you know, I mean, that crossed my mind, I mean, that can happen.
Oh, yeah.
I mean. Be a, be a, and we, you know, and somebody pull up underneath canopy.
Yeah.
You know.
Can't name a stranger in a phone call like up there, man.
So, yeah.
These are all things to write down and consider for future planning, uh, this is gonna be the, again. We're gonna talk about all these things, if you decide to eventually do the project, you'll have a list of everything we discussed, and then. Really, at that point, what it is, is we have all these things we discussed consolidated into the building assessment now. Were you to do this project in the future, you'd evaluate all that over, it wouldn't just be that you just take all this and just kind of go for it, but. It will have been discussed and, you know, put into the building assessment.
I think probably one of the main things that we need to be concerned about, I think our upper priority is still H A, H.
Well, yeah, yeah.
But if we are moving certain departments around that, we need to have that in there that we know. That we can take care of those needs. Or is this, if, if these newer systems, is it, is it able to reroute that pretty easily without a lot of major expenditures or? Well, let's say you run the main lines for H B A C. Let's say also, ten years down the road, five years, you decide, all of your movies department, all of your men agree to figure some of the. Is that easy to do?
So are you talking electrical or are you talking?
Depends on the system, obviously, and I think what we're, what we intend to do, Tom and those guys, Louis Stone, um. We tend to lay out all the different options. But also tell you at the same time, the frozen cots at the beach, if they're easily reconfigured of all in the future, I think Tom had an idea of. What you're using at the, at the jail right now, and I think in his mind, it would make a lot of sense to use the same system here.
I mean, layout like that system, would that be?
Yeah, that would be one of those where I think what he was talking about, and if Tom's watching, forgive me, when he explained it, it was, uh. Kind of a variable refrigerant flow.
Yeah.
So, those would be. Sent to individual boxes and modulated individually, answer your question, that would be probably one of the most. Easily reconfigured systems, yeah.
That's one of my concerns.
Yeah, so as you move through the building and, and in the future, do projects to renovate, remodel, and that. Your decision would be based on what's, what's easiest to reconfigure, obviously.
And as to my concerns, you know, we may decide what we want today, but we're not all gonna be here forever.
Yeah.
And the next board member says, you know, I think we need to change this now.
Yeah, yeah. That's the whole point of it, that's really.
Right, that's not, that's not what happened.
Okay. So E O C, uh, and, and supervisor boardroom. We've discussed, uh, and if there's any thing you'd like to talk, we're at ten oh five, we got told about ten thirty. Anything else you'd like to discuss, uh, on needs, requirements for the. Uh, E O C boardroom, I think we, we did a pretty good job of discussing it, and I think in terms of when we actually do the schematic layouts. There's gonna be adjacencies to other. Uh, departments, restrooms, things of that nature that we'll plan for each floor, so I think it would make sense, obviously. The E O C to be adjacent, adjacent to some restrooms on that floor as well, um, when you're talking about long term. Potentially in here for three or four days, you know, after a big event or whatnot, uh, you know. Just those, those adjacencies, restrooms, storage rooms, you know, if you need to store special. Any cots, anything like that for the room, I think we'd wanna probably factor it, storage room off of the. Boardroom, because you'll have tables, chairs, things that you like to take in, so. For this purpose, I'm gonna write some of the adjacencies here in the restrooms.
Let me ask you this question, uh, are my, the technology that would be on the board with that in the same technology base? Or is that not needed, need that tech?
Well, I, you know, I don't know that, I mean. You can have stuff plugged in, so that you can plug things in anywhere, and you, you know, I mean, if you've got. If Jason's got it set up downstairs, you could have a duplicate one in the, in the, uh, boardroom, as far as I'm concerned. Right, John, I mean. And it really doesn't make any difference if you have computers set up, but you have the capabilities of setting up computers, and so I, I think that's.
So it's more that it's having a wiring.
Just have the wiring.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you want to be hardware, I don't think you want to use anything like Wi-Fi or anything like that.
This will be the first thing to go in an after disaster.
Yeah.
Cause your cell phone will be such.
So I just think, you just have the capabilities of just plugging in, pretty much just like right there.
Right.
Just, I mean, that's, that's what he's done, I mean, he's got, he's got USB ports plugged in there.
Maybe, maybe we don't have that together.
Pardon me?
Maybe we don't have that together, because I can see if we have a disaster, we could have E O C set up. And we maybe want to have board meetings, have a meeting to discuss what our needs and.
You know, I think Jason's gonna say that, no, they don't need to have an E O C up here. They need to have it down there. Yeah, and so, you know, and I, I don't, I'm okay with that, simply because whatever he's doing now says, what you do here too. Simply because it's just a matter of.
Yeah.
Just plugging things in, so.
Well, with the E O C comes independent, um, communications, so if it's the antenna. And that feeds into a comp closet. Or if it's over fiber, however that, and I'll talk to Jason about some of those requirements. So, a standalone E O C, I think, is gonna have its own radio tower, that's for the deal, for Elec Park County, so. I don't know if we can answer that question right now, that's, if that's gonna be needed for, you know, a potential E O C here or not, but I think. Sounds like Jason is probably the person to talk to about that and. To kind of go back to your question in terms of. The infrastructure for the communications and whatnot. I, I think what we're planning on each floor. Each floor having its own con closet for a server, you know, that small, you know. Wall mounted or whatnot, that'll feed each floor and that makes, that makes the most sense, generally speaking. Now whether or not the E O C would need its own con closet to connect directly to a, to a tower, that would be something that would.
Jason or all.
You can get up into the weeds pretty quick on E O C.
The more I think about it now, it's, might be just good that they aren't doing.
I would agree with you. I mean, if, I, I, I guess I'm thinking, I'm thinking if you're gonna have a disaster. If you're gonna have some real situations and people are gonna be here 24/7, they're gonna, they're gonna want to be downstairs. They're gonna be, want to be next to communication center. And we've, we've had this discussion already with the emergency management that. We were piling stables downstairs and you just set those up in that hallway. And that's where you work at, you know?
I gotta think, you know, if, if there is a disaster, I remember last time I had that ice storm. Yeah, we were having meetings, what we're gonna do, what the plans were, besides what the, they were going down there, so you almost, we're almost gonna need to. You can't have them move out while we have a meeting.
I could see it being separate from this E O C or slash boardroom. Like what you set up in the E O C, you have all the communications and whatnot in there, it almost seems to make as much as that standard board things in there as well. And share E O C boardroom, leave 911. Separate. Is that what, I guess, I guess we could talk about it.
Yeah, yeah, we can have that.
Yeah.
Well, I think if, 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 if there's another, say an ice storm. It's a snowstorm that basically isolates them. Shuts everything down. Well, I'm not coming in, so we're gonna use this. The guy that's gotta get here, the guy that's gotta get here, don't make that all happen, or Ben. So I think those are, those are things I need.
I don't know that they actually have to come in either, because I think.
And they can probably be that from home. You're exactly right. So, you know, this makes, this solves a lot of problems. As far as communication.
The problem is, I need to borrow one year's office.
Yeah, that's the weak point, is your, your house without power for a while, you know, what happens there, so.
There's all kinds of scenarios.
I think it's good we have this discussion now, so we all kind of got an idea, at least. The board meeting room, what, what that wants to look like, whether or not that's part of a larger E O C or not. We'll sort that out. If the E O C is separate. Maybe it's adjacent to the 911.
E O C is, you know, something that are, are gonna hopefully never use.
Yeah.
Could be done, like you said, so there's tables up down the hallway.
Yeah, right.
I think that was the one, when the emergency manager had that discussion, I think that was. That was kind of the direction that. They were done, just set up the, set up the tables and chairs and be able to, probably on the. North wall be able to.
Does anybody know that since they put these antennas and has a cell phone. So down and better. That was probably the idea, and that's the one way. That time we had an ice storm, we, we had, we had a walk outside.
I think. Obviously having a discussion with Jason about the 911 communications, it's gonna be, it's gonna happen. Today, so I'll learn more then and I can kind of, I can kind of discuss more about any, what that requires as well. And again, taking in all the information, still got a process, all this, so we'll get there. And my next step is to get all this information and get it all in legible format, large program that we can discuss more, so. Understood, I, I understand the point first is we're not just gonna make each conversation and just run it, everybody. On the board is gonna be informed about what came out of the conversations, space needs potentially. And we'll get there. The next step really, after this. Is for us to start paneling for plans and that's when you really, you know. It, it's, it's one of those things where we can determine how much room we have for each department, so we don't get too far ahead of ourselves right now. How much room we have, how it would lay out, where our space has become available for maybe. A conference room or a break room or something to that effect. Identifying which floor in each of these go on is important, that helps. When I go into, like, if we're to put departments, it helps me kind of identify, you know, where space to be available for each of them, but. Having this information on what you need for your boardroom, it really helps and we will determine whatever that. Is the boardroom slash E O C or if it's maybe a one, two, eight slash E O C or if the E O C goes, like you said, out into a lobby or. So.
Well, I think the biggest thing is. That E O C is trying to get infrastructure placed.
Yeah, so. There's gonna be the drawings, which will show the size and shape, there's gonna be written, you know, dialogue in terms of what space could be needed. The floor plans will go a long way, I think, showing where things will fit, where they could potentially go. Once you start getting into structural requirements, you know, windows, shutters, all those sorts of real specialized things, I think. We can identify those as potential needs, but if that project becomes a reality, let's say in five years, 10 years. You define that as a project that you want to do for the county, you'll at least have it written down, uh, written down. Maybe things will have changed in over 10 years. They're liking little, um, we'll at least have a space identified for size and shape of adjacency, things of that nature. So in my mind, that's really truly at the heart of the building assessment overall. So I think we have a few minutes really, uh, yeah, about fifteen, a few minutes. A lot of this just talks about the existing departments and whatnot that are on each floor, where they're located, obviously identify which. Areas such as the jail sheriff's office. O W I, which are moving out of the building, so there'll be some openings in the facility for departments to potentially move to. And moving down this list, it's just some housekeeping stuff. I think really our next meeting will be in three weeks. We're gonna try to have it on Wednesday again. Getting these schedules is, is tough, just with everybody's individual schedules, but I'm gonna shoot for.
The 13th or 14th.
And when I come on that 13th, I will have. If we haven't discussed it already, I'll have the program, space program already established. On each of these, individual program statements for each department. Indicating what's required for each department, but then also an overall program for the entire building. Again, how much space we perceive needing in the future and how much space is available and also. For each floor that we can discuss at the next meeting. So that's what's scheduled, we already have. I have a list of the departments, I'm going to add those, those three others that I'll need to touch base with that. We, we talked about at the beginning of the meeting, Veterans Affairs. I'll, I'll get those names, contacts and whatnot, I'll contact those people. Get this, this statement to them so that they can kind of have a look at it. It's kind of good. I think you're right, to see it first, it's not absolutely necessary, but it would help in the, in the conversation. You kind of saw how we did it today with the boardroom, what are the, what are the needs? We didn't get really far into the details, but it gives me enough information to lay out the size of the rooms and where they're gonna be located and whatnot, so. That'll be kind of the next stop really, is getting all that sorted out. So there's gonna be a lot of background work on my part. With that, is there any questions you all have or any, you know, thing you want to discuss? I think for me, it's. After this meeting. Talking Cindy about the accessory space, but.
Um, when you get one of the proposals back or the assessment back for the H V A C?
Our plan right now is to, we're, we're working on that written portion of it, so I think in the schedule, I think we had that coming in the next meeting.
Well, if you're super worried about. I talked back this morning, he thinks it's the force saying that there's issue. So it's not like we're.
I'm just more curious to kind of see where that leads us, how much it's gonna cost and do we even have any. Or is this all this conversation, it's great to have this conversation now, but does it lead us to more, to have that one?
Yeah, the guys at Blue Stone are working on all of that right now. So really what we're ballparking for is having that information in this third of the fourth, we have four meetings, we're gonna have. A, a rough draft of it and then talk about it and then. Fourth meeting, we're gonna issue the file, you know, assessment report and the final schematic.
I think you're right, it's.
If you.
We gotta see, I mean, yeah.
If you'd like, I can ask Tom to get it early.
I think if you get a next meeting, that's fine.
Okay, alright.
So how do you want to handle the, have discussions with supervisors?
I'm able to accommodate however you'd like. If you wanted to do Zoom teams or whatever meetings, I can set those up. For whomever wants to do that and. Really I want to be as accommodating and as flexible as I can be. I think getting through this week and going through these assessments. Space needs is kind of first step and then individual conversations maybe next week. I'm, I'm open to however, whatever works best.
Doesn't, yeah, you can schedule each one. Do you have our emails for?
Yeah, I do.
Yeah.
Just reach out to each one of us.
Yeah, and when, when a time works for each one of us.
Yeah.
Do it at home. Get our whiteboards out.
Okay. I'll do that for that.
Well, I think these conversations are all good, like you said, a lot of this is gonna be down the road, future.
Yeah.
Yeah. It was a roadmap. Well, this is not gonna top, be accomplished overnight.
So it's the existing building, what you, you know, how to get it, I get it set up the last year for the next sort of generation really. As we've talked about, you're committed to keeping the courthouse here in this particular spot and. Been here for, you know, a number of years, hasn't had a whole lot of work done to it, hasn't been a lot of modifications or anything, but. Once you commit to keeping the courthouse, you know, and you want to plan for the future. Potential projects could come up down the road. So, yeah, I think that's all a good part of the assessment process. I, like I said, I've been through the process, so. Forgive, you know, forgive me for kind of, you know. Sending this out and telling you this is how sort of we're gonna do it and that sort of thing, it's, it's. Part for the course on how I, I do the assessment process and, you know, it's. It's, it's just part of the overall process. Once we get to the very end of it, it's gonna all have been very worthwhile. Yeah, yeah, and it's, it's tough. I think I mentioned that at the, early on, the interview is, you know. It's just dealing with a lot of sensitive kind of stuff and we'll, we'll get there, we'll, we'll make everybody happy at the end of it. It's just, a lot of people have done things a certain way for a number of years and, and, you know, change is always tough, but. I think the change would always be for the better, you know, so that's really the goal in front of it, is to, to see how we can get there and. Get things lined up for the future. So with that said, yeah, I appreciate everybody's time today. I can get set up in here if Cindy wants to come.
She's upstairs.
Oh, okay, so.
Cindy's upstairs.
Yeah, I can go ask if she wants to come down here if that works for her and meet up and. Or I can, I can go there as well, whatever.
Yeah. The mood, expect me to throw discussion.
I, I.
Are you done with the live stream?